Welcome to another episode of CROSSTALK. My name is Kevin Tochi and I will be your host for the next 30 minutes. What we try to do with this particular show, we use it as a vehicle to be able to inform the residents of the two communities that we serve here, Whitman and Hanson. And many times, there are a number of very good topics and conversations that we have, whether it's about particularly issues in either one of the communities. It could be an event that's coming up that we want to inform. Maybe it's an interesting person, maybe it's politics. And that's where our conversation is going to be going today. As you may or may not know, on May 20th, both in the town of Whitman and Hanson, it's town elections. And that means it's time for you to get out and vote. Joining me today is a gentleman who is looking for your vote come May 20th, Mr. Marshall Otina.
Kevin.
Welcome back to CROSSTALK. For folks who may not remember you from the political forum that we had at Town Hall not too long ago, give a little bit of a Cliff's Notes version of who Marshall Otina is.
My name is Marshall Otina. As you said, it's my second time running for school committee here in Whitman. I failed to run last year, but I feel like I gained a lot of experience from that. You know, I'm a father of two boys. For the past five years, I've spent every minute raising the two of them after I left my job full-time. I'm currently also in school, about 10 weeks shy of graduating with my accounting degree. So I've been doing that in addition to raising two boys. I'm also the son of a science teacher and former school committee member in the town of Milton. Education is just something I really believe in. I feel it's something, when you think of a town, when you want to be proud of, schools are kind of the biggest thing. It's why my wife and I decided to move to Whitman, you know, so that we could be part of this school district, so my kids could go to school with their cousins. And, you know, improving those schools a little bit day by day, year by year, is something I feel strongly about.
Talk to me about, here we are a year later, it wasn't too long ago that you and I were kind of sitting in the same positions, kind of getting to know one another, getting an idea as to why you wanted to run. Talk to me about, while you weren't successful in becoming a school committee a year ago, you said in your opening statement that you learned from it.
I did.
What do you feel you learned from it? You've utilized in this particular attempt?
It was half between, you know, the school committee run itself and working with the Whitman-Hanson supporters of schools, that project to, you know, get the override passed, which, again, we failed on, but I learned just a lot about the inner workings of school budgets and, you know, even, you know, the political machinations of the town of Whitman and Hanson, you know, what this town needs, how it's made up, the people that live in it. You know, I learned that the budgets are really what I spent the most time digging in last year to see, you know, what Whitman-Hanson does compared to the other towns around the area. And I feel I just gained just a wealth of information from that, you know, from endless nights pouring through budget reports and, you know, all the various different ways the town spend their money. And, you know, I feel coming into this year, I'm more well-rounded and certainly more educated.
And you've mentioned the word "education." That's what your background is, is in numbers, talking about budgets. What's some of the things that hopefully you can be one of, what, how many is it, 10 on the school committee?
Yes.
One of 10. What do you feel that if you're elected, the voice that you'd be able to share with the other nine?
You know, I want to bring, you know, more of a comparative approach, you know, something that we never really hear a lot of in the school committee meetings is, you know, we don't hear ourselves comparing, you know, how is Abington doing things more efficiently? How's Rockland, East Bridgewater? You know, how are the towns around us doing things? What are the results that they're getting positively? What are they doing negatively? What are we doing better? I mean, there are certainly some areas that Whitman-Hanson is exceeding, the towns around us, but there are areas, particularly financially, where we're just not up to par. So, you know, to look at those and to see, you know, just a better, you know, mathematical look, you know, to see our efficiencies and inefficiencies, to see how we can better educate our children.
Question that I had a chance to ask both yourself and another candidate who's running during the forum that was held by the two town committees, was the fact there's going to be a conversation come June, a lot of the stakeholders are going to get together and the idea is to kind of talk about ways to better fund education, whether that's, the goal is ultimately to seek an override that is, you know, instead of kicking the can down the road financially going, "We'll get it next year, we'll get it next year." Getting a long-term game plan in place. Give me your thoughts on that conversation and what are some of the things that need to be discussed to be able to, if an override is the way to go, the way to educate people, get everybody on board about it?
I think when it comes down to it, it really comes down to the stability. Year after year, what the Whitman-Hanson School Committee has done is they've taken funds out of their excess and deficiency, you know, their emergency funds to fund the operational budget. And that's not a sustainable way to keep funding schools. You know, that's one-time money, it doesn't get replaced. You know, the school, the school's business office does do a fantastic job of getting grants and getting reimbursements and trying to build that fund back up every year, but once it's there, once it's spent, it's gone. When we take the money from the tax funds, those are, that's money that we know is going to be there every year and that it's not going to go away. It's stable, it's just, you know, the right way to build the budget. Now, in terms of an override, it's inevitable at this point that, you know, right now, we were this close to having, needing an override this year just to maintain level services. You know, we're still not getting new things added on to, you know, we don't, we're not getting the full-day kindergarten, we're not getting mental health advocates, we're not getting the safety and security improvements that were proposed last year and got shot down. These are still things that are absolutely vital to the success of the students in Whitman and Hanson. Now, are there ways to minimize that override? Absolutely. You know, we don't have to put the entire success or failure of the schools in the hands of an override. You know, there are ways to move things around, you know. One of the things that I've been digging into a lot lately is particularly, when you look at other towns that are not regional school districts, the, you know, teacher salaries, those come from out of the town's budget. That's not a thing that happens in Whitman and Hanson. So when people, you know, the people in the towns, they look at, they look at, like goodness, these teacher salaries, these are, it's by far the biggest portion of the school's budget. And if those are coming out of the town's budget rather than the schools, it's, it's a different formula, the way to looking at things, you know. So you treat them like town employees, if that's something that we can do, work with the town. It's tricky because there's Whitman employees, there's Hanson employees, and then there's Whitman-Hanson employees. It's a tricky way to look at things, but it's something that deserves at least a second look.
When we talk about education, we talk about wants and needs. Talk to me about the needs of the school district, the things that parents, parents want, that parents feel are the biggest needs when it comes to educating the children moving forward beyond the fiscal '18 budget.
I think the three things that I kind of made the center of my campaign last year were the free full-day kindergarten, mental health advocates in school.
Yep.
And the kind of fulfillment of the STEM, the STEM education program that's been funded by a grant at the elementary schools, you know, that's still funded by a grant, that's not something, it's something that could go away at any moment. And to see, I don't know if you've been to the STEM cell in Whitman Center?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, my five-year-old goes there once a week and to see the projects that he's working on there, like, well, he should be doing that in school too, and it should be something fully funded. So STEM is the way of the future, it's...
And for folks who don't know, because STEM is technically an acronym, tell folks what STEM is.
Science, technology, engineering, mathematics, it's, you know, it's the world that we live in now, you know. It's the jobs that we're going to be creating, the careers that our kids and the other kids in town are going to be, you know, it's the way the world works in this century. So it's just a vital, you know, the sooner we get kids interested in that, you know, the better.
Well, if we look at our country, I mean, if, compared to other countries, how many engineers are we putting out? How many, how many folks who have the technical ability are we putting out compared to other countries who actually send their students here to get educated, to go back and help their countries and communities, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we need to be on the forefront again. And, you know, with programs like that in Whitman, which is, you know, it's a private thing, if we get something like that in our schools, you know, that's something that puts Whitman-Hanson back on the map.
Okay. Asked you about needs, how about wants? And a want is something that, well, if you can financially afford it and it's something that's feasible, what do you feel are some of the things that, that parents want for the, the school district that could be helpful in the long run for those who are getting an education in Whitman, the Whitman and Hanson area?
I think a want is always class size. I know at the end of last year, smaller class sizes, absolutely. I mean, you know, the fewer, the fewer students per teacher, it's, it's night and day, how, you know, how, there's only a certain amount of time in a class setting. You know, the fewer students that a teacher has to reach, the more each one of those children is getting one-on-one attention and more detail. And the schools did, the school committee did a great job last year of recognizing that that was a need, it was absolutely a need last year, and taking an extra 250 out of excess and deficiency to really address that at the elementary school levels. It's not at the critical mass it was last year, but reducing those class sizes is still something that is a want at this point, but would go a long way to improving the schools.
I know before the cameras were rolling here, I was kind of chatting a little bit about, you know, when folks get involved politically, it's interesting to see different candidates when they're running for certain offices. And you kind of mentioned why you wanted to run for school committee. And I admire it because I kind of feel that school committee is kind of, it's not necessarily the, the ground level, but it's one of, I think it's one of the foundations to understanding finances and a community and also to understand what's going on in the municipal level. What, other than because you like education, what are some of the other reasons why you decided to go for this and not for selectmen or sit on the finance committee? What has driven you a second year to run for school committee?
You know, school committee is kind of a mix of everything. You know, there's coordination between the schools, the selectmen, the finance, you know, the fire department, the police department. It's, everyone in town has a stake in education. Certainly they do at the finance level and the selectman level, but it's really, it's a unique position at the school committee where you're dealing with stakeholders that don't vote and you're dealing with people that pay taxes and don't have children in school. You have to combine all of those different wants and needs and wishes together and try to make everyone happy as best you can.
I guess I would, I would ask you, knowing that you're going to be running, you're hopefully going to be serving the town of Whitman in a school district, how difficult do you feel it'll be to be somebody who's caring about, you know, the, the education of Whitman children, but yet as a district in a whole? Give me your thoughts on kind of being conscientious about that.
It's absolutely, I mean, it's difficult to kind of separate myself from being a father and from being a, from being, sitting on a board. It's something I probably turned my mom for advice for because when she was sitting on the, the school committee in Milton, I was going through the public schools there and, you kind of just have to disassociate almost to, to treat my children not like they're my children when I'm at that board, but knowing that what I'm doing for them is going to benefit every other kid in this town.
Talk to me about, you look at, we've talked about finances, I talked a little bit about the conversation that's going to be happening in June. Being a parent, knowing that, now, are your children in the school system yet or they're about to be?
My oldest is starting kindergarten this fall and his little brother's right behind him.
Okay, knowing that your kids are on the cusp of entering the, the school district, give me your thoughts when we hear the conversations, the arguments, whether it's on-town meeting floor, whether it's about, you know, it's the municipality against, you know, the schools, the schools are like, "We need the money, we need this amount for an annual assessment." And then having finance committee members who are pro-school saying, "Well, we should, we should cut budgets a certain amount for, you know, town departments, but yet we should divert..." Give me your thoughts on trying to maintain a balance when it comes to funding and, and not depleting other essential services in a community.
And it's, it's definitely been tough. I feel like the past couple of years, it's gotten just more and more contentious and it really shouldn't be that way, you know. The schools benefit the towns, the towns benefit the schools. Do the schools get the biggest piece of the pie? Absolutely. You know, that's throughout the state, throughout the country, schools are the most important thing that any town or city does. Should we do that at the expense of fire and police? No, we do need to find a way to increase the pie. You know, we do have the lowest tax bills in Whitman, other than Cantland-Stotan in the area, who will have increasing, or have incredibly higher business rates, residential rates. Whitman is at the bottom. You know, I'm not saying that the town is a cash cow that we can bleed dry, but there's, there's ways that we can, you know, the firefighters are up for an override this year and absolutely they should need that. We need, we need firefighters to make sure that fire calls and emergency calls are accurately staffed. At the same time, we need more teachers, more programs to make sure that our kids are learning together.
Well, we talk about, when we talk about overrides and the thing that's interesting, I've, I've covered this my years in media, whether it's doing it for Whitman-Hanson Community Access, whether it's doing it for radio or doing it for print media, it's usually the, you know, the, the families that have children that want to see the best for the children and their folks who run fixed incomes. How can we find, how can we find a happy medium to be able to take care of the educational needs, but yet not force somebody to choose between getting a meal, getting medicine, or paying their, their mortgage?
I know it was discussed, a couple of candidates brought up the issue of waivers allowing, you know, seniors on fixed incomes to almost opt out of an override. I don't know if that's the way to do it. You know, when you're part of a town, you know, you take it moles and all, you know, you can't decide to pay, you know, "I'll pay for streets and fire, but I don't want to pay for police and, you know, council on aging," you know. It's tough. We need to do a better job of explaining to everyone, you know, why it benefits them. Why, you know, funding free, free full-day kindergarten benefits a 70-year-old couple that has no kids left in the school district? It's, it's not an easy discussion, but you have to look at the return on investment and to see, you know, when we produce, you know, greater results at the schools, those kids come back to Whitman, you know, they make families here, that's how the town grows.
Part of being a community.
Yes.
You've been out there talking with people, letting them know about your candidates for, candidacy for school committee. What are you hearing from the voters? What are they saying to you? What are some of the interesting conversations that you've had out on the streets?
I know people are happy they're not going for an override this year. You know, I know it's, it is coming. It's not this year, so I think people are a little more...
At ease.
At ease, yeah. Last year, things were, it was very testy in town. It was kind of, it was ugly for a little while, where the people, you know, just nastiness even at the, at the street level. It was getting ugly, but I think this year, people said, "Okay, they're not..." You know, I don't know if there was, you know, the element of people thinking, "Oh, the sky is falling, the sky is falling." And it's, it's not, but it's, you know, we're holding it up with a couple of hands. So I think right now, people are at more at ease, they're not as angry at the schools for, you know, try, you know, if you try for an override every single year, it's, it's never going to win.
And so we, again, paying attention to what's going on with the current school committee. Would you, what was your thoughts when there was an agreement, instead of pushing for 11.5 in the annual assessment from both communities, settling on? How important is that to have, to, to find a middle ground when you're negotiating to be able to survive yet, you know, get what you need?
I do think there does need to be a voice of dissent somewhere in the committee. And I know there's a lot of go-along and get-along there and, you know, it's absolutely understandable that, you know, in the years pass where they ask for, they ask for as much as they can and then it gets booted back down to 3.5%, and then there's one or two people that say, "No, we can't do that, we can't do that." So this year, I'm happy that they did ask for what they asked for. Obviously, I would have liked more. I would have, had I been on the board, I would have fought for more, I would have voted against the grievance in the assessment. That's just my personal take on it, though.
Okay. What do you feel sets you apart? There's three candidates, you're one of three candidates, seeking to fill two seats. You have two incumbents. What do you feel that you bring to the table that may be different from the two folks who have held that office for the past, held that seat that you're going for, for the past three years?
I think, you know, like you said, that they've been on the board before, I have. And what I bring is a voice of change, you know, things, not to pin any of the downfalls of the schools on any one particular member or the board as a whole in general, but you've seen the way that Whitman has slowly fallen down, you know, in per pupil expenditures, currently 11th from the bottom in the state, and that's a trend that needs to be reversed. And if you keep doing the same thing over and over again, you're going to get the same results. When you start changing things, that's when you can see some change in, in the results we're getting.
Give me your thoughts on, I mean, the legislative leaders that, that are elected, they feel that they do a good job. Do you feel that they do a good job or do you feel that more needs to be done to push for not only more funding, per pupil funding, but maybe there needs to be some kind of lobbying done for unfunded mandates?
I know there are some things in town that we are supposed to be reimbursed for 100% and it's not, it just doesn't happen. One of the legislators that I have emailed said that it will never happen and it's, it's disappointing to me that, you know, when we, when Whitman-Hanson regionalized, there were things set in stone, like this is what's going to happen and they haven't, the promises haven't been kept by the state. You know, do we need people on Capitol Hill to change that? Absolutely. Does the formula for funding schools need to change? Absolutely. You know, they, you know, our legislators have did a great job last year of increasing the minimum increase in Chapter 70 funding for the students, which was, you know, which was a, on paper, it's a huge boon, but at the end of the day, it's, it was about 100 grand that schools got, which sounds like a lot of money, but it doesn't go too far in a district of 4,000 students.
Right.
So there are things that need to be changed on Capitol Hill and, you know, who knows what's going to be happening there in the, in the next couple of years.
Talk to me about goals. Let's say you're successful, you are sworn in at Whitman Town Hall on the afternoon of May 20th. Have you set any mental goals, goals that at least, you know, that you'd like to achieve in the first, you know, first term as a new school committee member, if, if you're successful?
My primary goal is to get mental health advocates back at the elementary school level. It was something that was proposed last year and shot down. It was one of the more highly contested items that was on the student success budget, which to me is just, it's ludicrous to think that, that we expect teachers to be not only teachers, but social workers as well. And it's not, it can't, you can't encompass all of that in a classroom setting. There are children that have severe mental issues, that have, you know, custody issues, changing where they're going to, are they being fed at home? If they're, if they have, if they're thinking about that, they can't be thinking about arithmetic and reading and writing. That portion of a student's well-being needs to be addressed before they can think about, you know, their educational needs. And so it was not put back on the budget wishes this year. I would like it to see it to be a priority for the school committee moving forward.
Help me understand, when I, it was a while ago, when I went to school, there were guidance counselors. Are you looking to have somebody who is, do they not have guidance counselors in school or have they changed those individuals' roles?
It's more of like an adjustment for, like, an actual, like, social work. It's closer to what a social worker's job is than, rather than a guidance counselor. You know, they are dealing with, you know, DCF cases and dealing with custodial issues and things of that nature. So it's, it's a different job than it was when you were going to school and when I was going to school, you know. Their, mental health is one of the biggest problems in this country nowadays and the sooner we can spot a red flag in a child, the sooner we can treat them and make sure that they're on the right track.
If there was a way to make an adjustment, let's say if there was a way to, to create the position or, or maybe split between a full-time, if you could find a way in the school budget to be able to create a mental health advocate in each school, you know, that's what you want, just one per school or would you want to see an office of two or three?
As, one is a start. You know, right now, they're having, you know, people splitting time between the schools and I've heard it said that before, I don't know if it was either Mrs. Downey or Mrs. McKillop from the Duval School last year, when they were testifying at the school committee about it, saying, you know, "If, if one of their kids has a bad day, they hope it's on Tuesday because that's when they have someone in the building."
Wow. That's definitely interesting. What are some of the things that you've heard? I mean, help me understand, again, you have little ones who are coming up and you, I'm sure you have friends who have children in, what are some of the, the other problems other than, you know, marital problems, you know, children's parents having marital problems? How severe are things these days? I mean, does social media play a role in that or is it, or is it just a matter of being able to adjust to the school environment?
Yeah, social media plays a part in it. The opioid epidemic absolutely plays a part in it, you know, at, you know, in the home and family members. You know, it's, it's something that's touching every segment of life, particularly down here on the South Shore. It's devastating to families and, you know, the effect that that can have on seven or eight-year-olds is absolutely brutal.
What's your thoughts, what's your thoughts about the betterment of education when it comes to drugs? Because I think these days, a lot of communities are educating, you know, middle school children, sixth grade, seventh grade. Are you in the belief that maybe we should start earlier and younger to educate in regards to, you know, drug use?
I remember when I was going through school, in elementary school, I believe fifth grade was my first exposure to it.
Really?
I think we had a dare in fifth grade is when, and, you know, it was a different time back then and, you know, I think that, yeah, it's, it's not a comfortable conversation to have with a third or fourth grader, but it's one that has to happen. It's part of their life. Kicking the can down the road doesn't make it go away. You know, these children are being exposed with, they're smarter than we give them credit for, so, you know, it's not, it's not something that's easy to talk to a child about, but the, you know, the sooner they're made aware of, you know, the dangers and, you know, what, how it affects them, how it affects their families, it should be done earlier.
We've got less than five minutes left. Can you believe it? Time has flown. Is there a particular topic or issue in regards to your run for office that we haven't touched upon, but you will take a couple of minutes to at least talk about or maybe reiterate something that we talked about during our conversation here?
I think I might have skipped over a little bit on the free full-day kindergarten. It's something that gets brought up year after year. You know, I've mentioned before that, you know, I do have a five-year-old starting kindergarten this year and, you know, whether it's $3,200, $0 or $5,000, no matter how much it costs, my wife and I are sending our, our son to free, to full-day kindergarten. You know, there's only so much learning that you can squeeze in in half a day and, you know, kindergarten's not the same kindergarten that I went to. You know, they're learning more and more now and compressing that into a smaller timeframe, into a half a day, it robs them of kind of the social and, you know, the social element of being a kindergartner. You know, it takes away a lot of the extras, other than just the reading and writing and math aspects of it. It just forces them to do more in a smaller timeframe. So regardless, my wife and I will be sending our son to full-day kindergarten. Does everyone in town have that option? They don't. And it shouldn't be a financial issue. I mean, even families that are doing well off, there are families that have twins, you know, that's $6,400 minus any kind of credit they might have for, you know, income or sibling bonus, but $6,400 is a lot for anybody.
And do you look at other communities? There are other communities that do offer full-time kindergarten. Is it, I mean, is it like one of those things going, "Hey, look what that community has, why don't we have it?"
It's not even, you know, a few, at this point, it's an overwhelming majority of the state. It's over 80% of the cities and towns in Massachusetts have tuition-free full-day kindergarten. And why don't we have that? You know, we can look at it from a jealousy standpoint, like, "Oh, they have it in Rockland, they have it in East Bridgewater who just voted it in." Like, why don't we have that? And, you know, why are we setting our, our children behind the children that are going to be competing for college spaces, competing for jobs for in 20 years?
It's crazy.
It's, it's difficult to set two tracks of education for a child at five years old just because, you know, "My mommy makes more than your mommy, so I get to go and you don't." It's, it's uncomfortable, it's unfair.
If folks want to find out more about your run for school committee, we've just got a couple of weeks left here. Look into the camera, make your appeal, tell them why they should vote for you.
My name is Marshall Otina. I've lived in Whitman for two years now. I know that may make some people a little wary of me, but I've been a stakeholder in this town for a long time. For years and years, you know, I've been kicking it down the road. I'll be moved to South Shore, I'll move to the South Shore. And Whitman is finally, when my wife and I decided that this is where we're going to raise our kids, this is where they're going to go to school, where they're going to graduate, where we're going to make our life. This is the town that we chose. We love this town, we love the fire department, we love the police department, we love the parks. Our schools need to join the ranks of things that we can be proud about in this town. I promise you that I will work every day, I will show up every day and work for the kids of this town and work for the taxpayers of this town to make sure that they're getting treated rightly, just like the children are. I can't make you vote for me, I can only put the information in your hands.